Good usage.
I'm gonna bring this order. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right, we'll bring the meeting to order. June 18th, Moser City Council at 6:05 PM. Sorry for the delay. Amy, first thing you want to do, roll call officially?
Just one second.
Me as in focus may not be able to let people in.
Okay, Mayor Anderson.
President.
Councilor Turner.
Present.
Councilor Cannon. He may be all circle back. Councilor Wright.
Here.
Councilor Lindemeyer.
Hello.
And excuse me, have Brennan Campbell and then Councilor S.
Excuse, okay. Great, thank you. Councilors, any agenda corrections or additions or stat? We have fairly full agenda, a bunch of very good items on here. Anything from anyone? Go ahead, Ron.
I just wanted to talk about that you like off the bottom of the pond rosso.
Yeah, how about we'll add that, we'll put it very, at the very end. Because that doesn't require others if they don't want to stay. All right, so we'll add that. Anything else?
I just had a question, I think question several times about the status of mailbox here.
Yeah, we'll add that. Is that okay, Andrea? We'll add that. The Ponarosa light and the mailbox here. And also, we can talk about the post office policy at the end. Okay, Lydia, do you have anything? If not?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Approval of the June 4th meeting minutes, the hearing minutes. Amy, I just want to commend you. I thought those minutes were really good, very thorough. I have one kind of small comment that may or may not be important. But at the very end, when we approved the conditional use permit with conditions, I think one of the conditions we had some language for was on environmental protections. And the phrase I was seeking that included but not limited to, I don't think we agreed to that. So I would just suggest maybe get with Jamie Crawford and just fix that language to make sure we're citing that we added the environmental conditions during the site development plan, right? Anybody else have comments on minutes? Otherwise, very, really good job, Amy. Thank you for that. Lydia, you're good, good on the minutes? So we want to all entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
It's true. Because I was present and I haven't had time to read, you can read them.
Oh, yeah. Do you get to vote on it?
That's my question.
Yeah, Laura, did you hear that question?
I did not, Mayor.
The question, Councilor Lindemeyer was not here for that hearing. Does he get to vote on the minutes, given he was not here?
Oh, Councilor Lindemeyer, if your vote is needed, you could vote. You have the option to vote or not vote. So it's personal preference. Most people tend to abstain if they weren't there to acknowledge what occurred. But you can do so by any means besides attending the meeting. So if your vote is needed, you could vote.
We kind of need your vote or we'll have to vote later. Ron, you want to move?
Yeah, I need to approve the minutes from the June 4th, 2025.
Okay, Lydia, do you want a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous with quorum of four. And Charlie, Charlie's still not with us.
Yes, he is. He just arrived. Hi, Charlie.
Hey, Charlie.
Yeah, sounds good.
You approved the motion to approve the June 4th minutes?
Yes.
Are you in favor? Okay, good. You got that, Amy? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now is the time for anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Mark, are you here to make?
I'm good.
Okay, you're good. Anyone online that wants to make a comment? Anyone once, gone twice, Anna Louise, you're here for the memorial for Shannon? Okay. Okay, if not, great. We'll go to business. And Kathy and Emily, Gorge Transit presentation. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your forebears on the delay. You've been through this before, I know. Thank you.
We started much later and the agenda is so, so this is great. So I'm Kathy Fitzpatrick. I am the Regional Mobility Manager for the Columbia Economic Development District. I've been working with Emily Reed for about the last four, five, six years on, on marketing, public outreach for the Gorge Transit Network. And, and so we're going to give you a presentation today on Gorge Transit updates and, and we're going to focus on the 10 most important things that you need to know about your public transit system.
Do you want questions along the way, or? If we have any?
Yeah. Rachel, what's in? Yeah, yeah, we do have points. All right. Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to have a few questions to do as we go. So how many people here have ridden the bus in the Gorge? In the Gorge? Excellent. Okay, lovely. You win.
All winners. All right, so top, number one, coordination. So the five county transportation providers have been working together since, since 2000, 2001. And previous to that, from the 1970s on, they were dial right focused only. But they came together 25 years ago with a vision for public transit for everybody in the Gorge, not just seniors and people with disabilities. So, so they've been working on it for quite a long time.
...in one million dollars and also discretionary dollars for special projects and pilot projects. So Oregon is fortunate to have that pot of money. It's a point one percent of an employee's earnings is that tax that's taken out of, state tax that's taken out of their earnings that then goes to fund public transit. So Washington passed several years ago, they passed a large transportation bill, sixteen year transportation bill. So there are a lot of funds that were combined with their Clean Action Act. And so a lot of the carbon credits, a lot of those monies coming from that program go into public transportation on the Washington side. So the budgets, both Washington and Oregon state budgets. So in Oregon, the budget proposal right now for the TRIP bill, which is the kind of the mini transportation bill. So we're looking at all sorts of transportation funding for just simply maintenance, looking at the road usage tax, which would hopefully Monday supplant the gas tax. Looking at all kinds of different programs. It's also, the proposal is to increase the House of two thousand seventeen employee tax for public transportation because that point one percent that was set in law in two thousand seventeen, it's not going to be as far as it did in two thousand seventeen because you can match with inflation. So and staffing costs, et cetera. So the state dollars are significant for both Oregon and Washington. We also get the counties, so not Wasco County, but River County, they are a special district. So they get a portion of property taxes. Wasco County, neither Wasco County nor Sherman County puts in dollars for public transportation, something you might want to ask them about. There are the other counties in quite a large amount. The Cliff County is funding their transportation program with a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year. The Dals, the city of the Dals, provides a sizable contribution, about twenty, I think it's twenty-five thousand policy here now. So there's other ways of getting that funding, but if the FTA funding goes away. So the FTA funding is mostly funding dial line services. Pretty much, I'm trying to think of dial line services, but then also some special services like mobility management and travel training, that kind of thing. So it really depends on wanting to get a grant. A lot of times the state chooses.
So how much? So how much of the gorge transit operation is paid by, what else, I'll use terms, funds that are non rider passes, you know, that, what portion of the budget is it like? Because it's got to be significant, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. In fact, yeah, there's only a very few transit agencies who have a significant amount of their funding that comes from Fairbox.
Yeah, right.
And when you, and any Fairbox recovery that you get has to be, is actually taken out of your grants. So it's not, it's kind of a little shell game here.
Anyway, so back to, is your federal money that comes through the states? Because I know Oregon's legislature, thirty-two percent of Oregon's budget is federally derived funds.
Yeah, so FTA, some federal transit authority dollars go directly to a transit agency. Some of it is bundled through the state, but those state dollars that I was just talking about previously are not federal dollars. So, but there is, there are federal funds that fund special programs like dial line services.
So there is some risk with the federal dollar?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, keep going, sorry, I didn't mean to take you.
Okay, programs. Can go a little bit quicker here. There's some really cool programs that have been developed over the years. One is the downtown passes for downtown workers in Hood River in the Dallas. And so that gets cars, keeps them out of the downtown area. And then we have a new one that kicked off today called, like, the summer program for teens. So ride the bus, get through stuff. So if you know any teens, tell them to go to the library, pick up a prize. All they have to do is hop on a bus to get stamped, validated, and they get pizza or ice cream or donuts and pizza. So that's fun, what we're doing. Also, it's not really a program, but we threw it in here. This is the best place to pit, which is the Transit Summit, which Lizzie and Lydia actually attended. It was a really fun day of lots of everything you need to think of about transit and all the benefits that it has, including congestion and affordable housing, social service and emergency management, tribes, et cetera. So, yeah, really, we're back today where we're able to really look at transit in our area, see the benefits such as freedom of community accessibility, ask how you would spend your extra five thousand dollars a year because you're driving in cab, which is mostly vacations, and then really looked at Utopia, whether it be purposely car free or hey, we have all the money in the world, but we want the perfect transit system, and we ended up in very similar conditions. So lots of great stuff came out of that day. Mine is travel trainers. And these are the two folks that we have, one on the Marshall County side and one in Oregon, who can help basically folks learn to navigate the system. So reschedule, do a transfer, taking classes of folks on trips. And we actually have a little video. So this is where I wanted to ask everybody to mute your own computer in the room. Because if you mute your computer, it won't have a feedback. Okay, so yours?
If I do that, then people online won't be able to hear me.
They will, because mine will still be on. So if you mute yours, it won't work. Thank you. They know now how to do it on their own, and they have all sorts of trips planned on their own as well. Okay. Okay, future is the final one. There we go. But then it echoes. I don't know how to. Okay.
You mute yours.
Okay. I'll mute mine and then. How's that? Okay. Excellent, thank you. Okay, future. So this is a picture of the new transit center that is hopefully planned to go within the downtown. On the Port, in Hood River. In Hood River, in Hood River, sorry. Port Hood River. Thank you, yeah. If you want to sort of.
Yeah.
Do you replace the existing?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. So we need the main one.
The main one?
Yeah.
The bus stop.
Yeah, the bus stop.
Yes. Where everybody would transfer and be very close to the downtown in the area. So that's in play. The other thing that is new is that we have guaranteed, we have a Lisle section has now been made for with a grant, which is great. So now you can go from White Salem to the Dallas through Lisle, which is just closing the loop. So lots of Lisle people being sad about not having a service. And one of the things that came off of the summit is that we started these groups called Team Transit. And we are basically gathering people who are enthusiastic about transit, getting them together to think of fun things to do, ways to support transit in general in the gorge. And we also just had an emergency partners workshop with all of the emergency managers of the border front counties. We're talking about ways that transit can be more ingrained into emergencies. And one of the first things that came out of that is the communication system that we connect with drivers and happening to the emergency system communication as well. So lots of really interesting, great things happening with that. That's just kind of started a conversation, and there's a lot of outcomes from that. Okay, so there we go. That's the future. One last video, should we try?
Yes.
Okay, let's try one last video. So everybody gets to show off theirs, and I will.
Okay. We'll see.
A thirty to forty percent of their Fairbox recovery and spending that service really struggled to get through. So any of those, you just are really unstable ground. I think the most stable sources are your state funds that we're funding. I mean, FTA funds, who's stable?
That's good to hear. So councilors, any questions, comments?
Just very good presentation. I heard a lot.
Lydia, anything you have to offer?
I did want to respond to Anna Louise, who said it would be great if the bus went right to the airport. So it goes to Gateway where you can transfer. So it's one transfer, which is faster than just transferring parking and long term and taking that shuttle. So it's faster, quicker, cheaper. But one thing is that if the bus would go there, like, all the way there, it'd cost a huge amount more just getting that final piece of it, and they would be getting a lot of traffic a lot.
Yeah, so reliability would decrease significantly. And that's, yeah.
Are there any other questions from the public online?
Lydia?
Yeah, actually, is there any talk of teaming up with TriMet in particular for like funding or anything, especially for the Columbia Gorge Express route? Or any opportunity to collaborate with them at all?
Not for funding. So they're getting the same funding sources that we are, some state and federal funds. So there's no reason for them to, you know, give us a gift. But we do, you know, we do work with them when they redid the Gateway Transit Center. You know, we needed to work with them on making sure that Columbia Gorge Express had a place to stop and, you know, through all of that process, we've looked at possibility of combining, of finding that fair mechanism that would be cremation fair mechanism. But that's really, it's just more, it's more complicated than it's worth for the riders, something like that.
Okay, well, thank you. We're running on. Thank you for your thirty minutes. Thank you for coming, Kathy and Emily. Great program, we're big supporters. As Emily knows and councilors know, goes a long way towards our environmental sustainability goal in our strategic plan here in Moja, so we're all supporters of it. Thank you. You're welcome to stay. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to account to City Manager Rogers, the Miles Creek Basin TMBL five-year implementation plan.
So this is something that the city has been involved in for some time, at least five years. And sure, and this was a requirement to update, review, and implement for next five years. So I still worked on this, taking what had been done before. And first, we had to answer a lot of questions as to have we met these different benchmarks. And then they essentially created a very similar plan to what we had in past five years. There is work for the city to do, especially around community outreach. And Colleen connected me with a nonprofit that might be able to offer their free assistance to like a public outreach campaign, or may be able to help us find someone to do the water measurements that we say we wanted to do, riverkeeper. So we'll be looking for partners to support that. Part of the thing that I didn't really realize is that, you know, this, this plan really requires the city to be responsible for streams that aren't even in its city limits.
But do what we can within the city limits.
And then to do what we can within the city limits, which we have done through ordinance there, many, many years ago, doing those plantings. And so we've assigned the cover letter for this, the date that it was due was on the fifteenth. So this is sort of after, after the fact that we submitted the final plan to DEQ.
So you guys weren't, other councilors that are here tonight weren't here. Maybe Ron, you were here five years ago, and some of us expressed concern, recalling at the time about making commitments to DEQ that we're going to do public outreach and do these things. So I had that discussion with Andrea, and I just said, I'm not speaking for council, but personally, I'm good with this. However, I'd like to see specifically what we have to produce every year. So we live up to our commitments, because I don't think in the last five years we've actually done all the things we were supposed to do. So Andrea, you're, so your, so your plan of getting a nonprofit or somebody to help us. And the only other thing I would say is, I guess if you haven't already talked to that, I forget the young lady at DEQ that's working this, have that discussion with her. Yeah, so she's aware, you know, we're tight on staffing and funding, but we're going to work with who we can out there to help us do what we should do, what our commitments are in the plan. Councilors, any other comments or questions on this?
This is a, it's an oversimplification problem, I imagine. But one thing I didn't see in here was, temperature, change temperature is a critical parameter. Then it seems like one of the first things you would do is measure the temperature of the water coming in and the temperature of the water going out to see if you're, if you're contributing within the city limits to that temperature rise. And if you are, then maybe you need to do something. If there is no temperature rise, then it seems like that could simplify some of the things that you have to do. Is that just too easy?
No, we, you know, this is a conversation we had five years ago. Exactly where you're going. You know, I think, you know, we could spend a lot of time diving down into the weeds on this. You know, to answer that question, what data has been collected over the years in Moja Creek and Rock Creek, which is are the two areas that have, as you say, limited sections in the city footprint. But I think suffice it to say, you know, we've got a plan, we've worked out with Oregon DEQ, let's just move forward. And, you know, if you want to dive into those questions, we can, but it's.
Well, those are good, those are good questions to ask. Those are the, the city is supposed to be doing measurements on these creeks that are far out of its city limits, and somebody else must be doing those.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, that is my hope, is there's other people studying these creeks and we can.
Yeah, that's why I suggest have that discussion with Carissa, and so there's clear understanding. Because again, I was really concerned, Ron, that maybe you at the time were making commitments and like, where does money come from? Who is the staff? Who's got the rosepin on them to deliver these things? And it was like, oh, you know, it was, this isn't hard. But again, the players for it, not to mention all the technical questions. Well, as Andrea said, I've signed the letter. Are we needing to have resolution to approve our motion?
I will ask Laura. This is, it's, we spent five thousand dollars with Stone to develop this five-year total minimum daily load implementation plan. It's essential, a requirement from DEQ due to our roadways. I've already initiated the work. The work is now complete. We need an approval to submit the final plan from all of council or is Witt's signature? Because Witt put a signature on the cover letter. So he probably would like council's agreement on this, but what would that motion look like?
Would you tell me what page of the agenda packet that letter is on? Am I?
I don't think it's in here.
Oh, that would have been right before the, right before the, the whole report on the TMBL. It's going to look.
It's not in there.
That is not true.
Then it's at the end.
If not, okay.
I'm sure, I know I saw it in here. Oh, I see, okay, page forty-four. I would say typically, Andrea, well, and Mayor Anderson Council, the Department of Environmental Quality may require council approval, so it's safest and most conservative to just get it now while you're all here.
So motion?
I don't know if that's required in this instance, but I would go ahead and do it. And I'd recommend entertaining a motion to approve Mayor Anderson sending the letter dated June fifth, twenty twenty-five to the Department of Environmental Quality.
Thanks, thank you, Laura. Did someone want to so move?
To approve Mayor's signing of the implementation.
Thanks, another letter for you. Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Do I have a second? Ron, seconds. All in favor? All of us in the room, Lydia? In favor?
Yeah.
Andrew, Lydia?
In favor? That's who the answer is. Charlie?
I don't have.
Yep, I approve.
You have to watch the screen. Okay, thank you. Okay, and you got that. Thank you guys for the work on this. And I would just say this, going forward, if any council member would like to dive in, you know, get their hands involved and work in some of these issues, like, this would be a great project where people have time to help out, you know, work on the questions like Ron's question, or to honor the commitments we make in this five-year plan. Okay, moving on, I got to go back to the front page here. Thank you, Laura. Okay, is this Laura, approval of the resolution on the short-term rental ordinance amendment? Andrea, you two had up, or Laura?
I can't, I can't, Laura, Tina, that's okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Let's see, so the city Moja has an existing short-term rental ordinance in Title Five, Chapter five point two oh of your municipal, city municipal code, which is still online. What the, your staff has recommended today is an amendment to your existing ordinance based on recommendations made, I think they were spearheaded by Counselor Wright, who got together with some of the folks on your short-term rental stakeholder committee that was convened for the original adoption, not the whole committee, I should say, but only some members of that committee. And the main change is, Counselor Wright, I'll turn it over to you in a minute if I'm getting anything wrong, but the main changes is really for the ease of administration of the ordinance. So the existing ordinance requires a very specific timeline for applications for vacation home rentals for a short-term rental license, and it's only available on a biennial basis. The city staff and the people who came up with this recommendation feel it's going to be least burdensome to the city to do it sort of on a first come, first served basis as licenses become available. So you could basically apply year round. That's one of the two main changes. The second change is actually, it's not in red lines, so I'll point it out here in section.
It's five to zero point zero eight zero, and then there's a, there's the map.
Thank you, Andrea, yes. So availability of short-term rental licenses. There is a neighborhood map, which is, has not changed from the original adoption. That's in the proposed ordinance before you in your agenda packet. What the change is in this amendment is changing it from what was a seven, maximum availability of licenses per neighborhood map to ten percent. So in other words, instead of seven percent of available residential dwelling units that may be available for short-term rentals, now it will be ten percent, which I think Andrea can speak to better, but I think more parallels what you, what the city is seeing right now in terms of numbers of expected short-term rentals or known short-term rentals. Is that right, Andrea?
That's right. We did, we did unofficial count of short-term rentals in all of the neighborhoods, and then did a little bit of the math, and all of the neighborhoods were over at the seven percent cap. And at the ten percent cap, there is maybe one space available in the blue zone, which is the upper downtown area. You know, but until we get noticed and have people come forward, we won't.
Looking online, I think most of you look like you're here online. The PDF page fifty-five is the beginning of the ordinance. The PDF page 55, uh, the beginning of the ordinance that is proposed for a first reading tonight. If you would like to adopt these changes, prior to that is the red line. So you can see what's being changed or proposed for changes. And if you do want to discuss and feel ready to move this forward without change, you can go ahead and do the first reading tonight. I can speak to the motion on that. But Counselor Wright, is there anything I missed in terms of the red lines?
No, no, I think, I think you got it. There was, yeah, that's, that's basically the, the objective was to change that from a lottery system to just a simple first come, first served, biennial limit.
Yeah, well, um, I'm ready to move forward, but it looks like we are in the room. Charlie, Lydia?
Charlie, Lydia, you need comment?
So, yeah. Yeah, Laura, do you wanna, do we, do we need to read the motion to approve and then we read by title only? Or do we need to read the whole ordinance?
You can read by title only because of the process we set this up as. And this is all in your, um, the, the process for ordinance adoption is in your charter. So you would entertain a motion, Mayor Anderson, for, to approve the first reading of, and then read the ordinance title.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do one of the counselors be so inclined to move to approve?
I mean, did the council adopt an ordinance of the City of Moser adopting amendments to the operational rules and licensure requirements for short-term rentals?
By title.
That, that good, Laura?
Well, you typically adopt it in two meetings. So this would be the first, holding the first reading.
Right.
So instead of, uh, I move to adopt the ordinance, say I move to hold the first reading, adopting an ordinance of the City of Moser, adopting amendments to the operational rules and licensure requirements for short-term rentals.
Do you want to amend your motion, Laura?
Need to, to council accept the first reading of the ordinance of the City of Moser adopting the amendments to the operational rules and licensure requirements for short-term rentals. How are they?
That good, Laura?
Yeah.
Yes, thumbs up.
Yeah, okay. All in favor? Or no, do I have a second? First, the second?
Very second is.
Counselor Lindemeyer seconded. Okay, all in favor? All in favor in the room? Charlie and Lydia?
Hi.
Lydia?
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you, Ron. Thank you for your work on this in the committee and Laura, Andrea. It's been a long time coming, so now we can get it implemented. Great.
Well, we'll read it, uh, we'll, we'll have a second reading at the next meeting. And then we'll have 30 days to implement the ordinance. And we are working to be ready to take applications at that point.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Laura. All right, moving on. Laura, fireworks ban, is that Laura or you?
I'm gonna let Laura do that also because it means that you've got to declare an emergency.
Okay, yes. Hello again, Mayor Anderson, Councilor. This is for the new counselors in particular. Maybe you haven't seen this before. The City of Moser, the City Council typically does declare an emergency based on the increased risk of fires in the gorge, which I know you're all aware of, is an increasing risk. And the last, it, it's particularly urgent during the Fourth of July fireworks. So it's a pretty self-explanatory declaration. You declare a state of emergency in order to, so what this does, if you pass this resolution, what this does is put the city in a state of emergency, which allows certain procedures and timelines to be avoided if there's an, um, an urgent need, for example, to contract with another city to get help and fire support related to the emergency, things like that. If you need contractors because the city hall has caved in because of a fire, things like that. So that's what you're doing with this. Can I answer any questions?
No, I think it's straightforward. We do this every year. Any discussion, counselor, counselors? Okay, all in.
Lydia has a question.
Um, would it be more beneficial in the long run to just like completely ban fireworks in like City of Moser? Or would that, um, would that, um, not allow us to be able to file an emergency ordinance just in regards to having contracts with the wildfire fighter services as well as that? Like, do we?
Right, Counselor, so rather than have an, uh,
like annual emergency fireworks ban? Is there a way to just ban fireworks in the area, period? But still be able to have continuous contracts with the services that you had previously listed?
Yes, there is. You have already an ability under your procurement code for the city manager, for example, to enter into emergency contact, uh, contracts. I don't know if that extends to, yeah, I guess the, the purpose of having more emergency flexibility is that we have unanticipated needs and perhaps the city manager isn't available during. So it goes to the next person and it's a little bit more flexible in that way. But I, I do believe there is a way we could do this in a permanent codified way rather than on an annual basis. And I'm happy to look into that. Certainly you could, as an ordinance prohibiting fireworks at any time of year. If there's, um, you know, rational basis to do that, we can, we can present that in an ordinance for you to adopt as part of your code. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Lydia, great idea. Maybe, maybe this is one for Andrea and Laura, the team, to think about, maybe huddle with the fire district. You know, do a little outreach and make sure, you know, the ins and outs, pros and cons to that. But it's not a bad idea. Meanwhile, I'd suggest let's adopt this resolution. So we, we're covered coming up on the Fourth of July holiday. Does that make sense, Lydia?
Oh, absolutely. No, I, like, I mean, I think that this one could be an email. I think we're all in favor for adopting this right away. So, but I was just thinking like long-term goals or long-term overall things.
Well, Andrea, put it on our list.
I'll put it on my list. Christmas and New Year's, we can shoot off fireworks.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that, that's the, the twist that some people will want to be able to do that when it's snowing, whatever. Okay. Can I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
I move that we adopt resolution declaring a state of emergency due to increased risk of fire that is banning fireworks.
Okay, I think that works. Any discussion? Not, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ron or Lydia? Second, all in favor? All in favor in the room? Charlie, yes?
Hi.
Okay. Great, thank you all. Okay, moving right along. Thank you guys for the prompt business on these items. Kashmir Bank tinging the signers. Andrea, is that you?
Yeah, unless Amy wants to take a step around it.
Sure. Um, so we currently have Kashmir Bank that has some populated check signers, one of them being Arlene Burns and Tamara. I don't know how to pronounce her last name. So what we're proposing is, we've got a letter here asking to remove a few people, putting Andrea on as any contact, and then giving both Monica and I viewable access so that we can monitor votes and transactions and such. So we have that as a letter to put in front of you guys because if we approve that, we can sign this and move forward.
Yeah, and then we'll, and then after that's done, we can point the, the check signers based on the same text signers as Amquash. Can we, can we agree to, to check signers tonight?
Yeah, I, I mean, why not? And that would be Ron, Ron and Brenna, the two check signers. Okay, do we need a motion for this, Laura?
I missed your question. I, sorry, you cut out for a minute.
Do we need a motion to approve the check signers for the Kashmir account?
Yes, absolutely, you do. Yes, I saw that in the packet.
So I would recommend a motion to allow city staff to move forward with this letter. What's it called? Letter of intent?
It's a letter of intent.
As well as identifying Ron and Brenna as check signers for the Kashmir Bank.
Perfect, that's a good motion. So counselors, would someone move, is Andrea suggestive? Ron? It's a test.
I failed. Move that we move forward with the letter of intent to Kashmir Valley Bank to add myself, Ron Wright, and Les, and Brenna as check signers.
And to make the adjustments, like removing Arlene Burns?
Oh, to make adjustments, removing Arlene Burns and adding Andrea Rogers. And also removing John and Tamara.
So can we check, can we go back and, and make it a little simpler? Just that the motion would be, I, I, I move that we move forward with the, the changes to Kashmir Bank using the letter of intent and the authorized check signers. Is that, is that easier?
Yeah, I move forward, I move that we move forward with the letter of intent to Kashmir Bank, uh, make the changes and what? And to add myself and Brenna as check signers.
Good. Any discussion? Not? Laura, does that, that, that work, Laura? Yes, shaking her head, Laura shaking her head, yes. A second?
Yes, I think that, so what, what Counselor Wright said that? In addition to this, the updates are to add Counselor Wright and Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, he said that.
Right?
Yeah, he, he included that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. A second? Gary, Counselor Lindemeyer, second. All in favor? All in favor in the room? Charlie and?
Hi.
I lost Lydia.
Hi.
Okay, good, great, thank you. Good work, good work, Amy and Andrea, playing that up with Kashmir. Okay, is this one back to Laura on limiting recreational, recreational use liability within the city? New chapter to the municipal code. Laura, you, is that yours?
Yes, we have filled this agenda with laws today. So this is a recreational immunity ordinance that the city council is considering for the first time. I don't know how familiar everyone is with recreational immunity. Immunity is essentially a defense saying, okay, yes, you were injured while biking on a trail on city, on public land, but we don't need to pay for your claims or damages because of this defense. So it's, it's, of course, for a public policy purpose to encourage private landowners to offer land for public use, such as for recreational trails, uh, horseback riding, biking, running, walking, hiking, that kind of thing, fishing. The reason this comes up now is, uh, there was, there was a court case pretty recent, last couple of years, I think in 2023 or 2022, which is actually still ongoing. That was in the city of Newport, where someone was walking on a public, public easement on the way to the, a beach trail and injured herself to the city. And the city tried to raise this recreational immunity defense and lost on that because, uh, the, the court suggested the person was not actually recreating at the time of the injury. She was on her way to recreate. So because of that really subtle language, the state legislature felt concerned about this. Well, actually, everyone felt concerned. For those of you on the council, you probably remember the, the city being advised by your insurer to close all trails, just outright. Say, we're no longer accepting this risk. People aren't allowed on the trails anymore, which some people, some cities followed and others did not. But in any, any case, uh, the state legislature was concerned and passed a temporary fix allowing for a more expansive view of or interpretation of recreational immunity, which this month, uh, in the current legislative session, they codified into a permanent legislative fix, which is through Senate Bill 179. I think that's in the recitals to what you're seeing as this proposed ordinance. And the codification will be in ORS 105, 668. The reason you need to adopt this, if you want to benefit from the recreational immunity statute, is the statute only allows the immunity for public bodies in jurisdictions of over 500,000 people. So anyone, any city that's under 500,000 people, residents, can choose to benefit from the statute by adopting a local ordinance. So we propose this for you to adopt today in the same way that you adopted the first reading, or held the first reading of the short-term rental ordinance. This would be codified in Title 11 of your code. And it basically benefits, you know, for Moser's purposes, any, uh, any private land owner that may be creating or installing a trail that may later be dedicated to the city. For example, they would benefit from these protections, as would the city, all the city's employees, the city council, and adjacent landowners. The exceptions are if you charge a fee for the use of the trail. There's also an exception for strict liability claims. Those are typically, for example, environmental claims are usually strict liability claims and gross negligence, which is a really high burden. So everything else would be covered under this defense and would encourage the, the use of public or the use and creation of public trails.
Laura, a question for you. Thank you for the briefing. We charge a fee for parking at Rock Creek Park. Essentially, it's for parking. Does that add any nuance or, or not? The fact that that city park, there is a fee to park there?
Um, well, I'd have to see, I, I doubt there's any case on that, but I would, I would think that this isn't covered for claims occurring in the parking lot. Uh, just because of the language of the statute, which is really only during recreation, during recreation.
So access to park for recreational activity is separate?
I'm not, I am not concerned about the city charging for parking. I think.
I guess that's, yeah, that's.
For parking, the, the application of this defense would be the same.
Yeah, okay. Because I recall historically, going back before my time, when the fee was $15, ostensibly it was because of recreational immunity, some limit on, but that turned out to be a false. We, there's not a limit on what we charge to park due to liability reasons. Okay, all right, to, uh, great, absolutely, we want to do this. Counselors, any, any questions, comments? If not, does someone want to tee this up with a motion to accept the first reading?
Sure. I move that the. I move that the city council accept the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Mojer limiting liability from claims arising from the recreational use of certain trails and structures within the city and adding a new chapter to Title 11 of the Mojer Municipal Code.
Any discussion? That good? Thumbs up, Laura? Yeah, great. Good work. No discussion? Do I have a second? Gary, councillor Lindemire, second. All in favor? All in favor here?
Aye.
Good. Bye. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Laura, for your work on this and Andrea and staff. Great. Okay, does that bring us to the to Anna Louise? You've been waiting patiently for the briefing on the memorial chair for our good friend Shannon. Are you still there, Anna Louise? Yeah, there you are. Thank you for your patience, Anna Louise.
And actually, this has been very interesting, by the way. I've enjoyed it. Seeing what's going on in the council. So yeah, so I'm actually several of us, several of us were going to be here, but I'm I'm the only one now. And I'm here. So I'm representing a bunch of windsurfers, wind fanatics, wingers, kites, who knew Shannon Hill. And he was a fixture on the Rock Creek Beach. And if you read the document, it says everything about him. He was just a really great positive energy many people. And there was just a surge after he died to have him, you know, to say, hey, you know, he always sat in this very same place and involved everybody in community to come over and chat. And also just, he was just very positive in many ways. And let's 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 put a chair where he would always sit, you know, and in in his memory. And this past year, last year, another person passed away on the on the beach. And I was there and it it really affected me as well. And so I think the whole idea of this bench would be just for the people that have been such good positive energy for Rock Creek. Have a a little bit more of a permanent fixture, chair, bench that people can sit and communicate and share fun ideas and and Mojer stories. And so so not only Shannon, you know, I think it would be for for just the greater energy of of our Rock Creek community. And I'm not the, I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm just here, but I'm representing a very big group of people that that talk to me because I'm actually a Mojer resident, you know? And a lot of these people are coming in as as transients as well, come here in the summer and and some are from from Mojer as well. And so what what we'd really like to be able to do, and we would fund it all, would install it, rather than having what what is now on the beach chairs that people bring and leave them there, and then they float away on down the river or get piled up. We'd like to put something a little more permanent there that's a simple Trex-like bench with a little plaque. And if you read the document that I that I shared, you know, just in memory of the energy that people like Shannon provided for this community. And and we would, we would call it. There are, there is already a bench there. I don't know if you all know that, but there's actually a bench on the beach. I don't know if you saw this, but there's a there's a bench on the on the beach. And so I don't see the precedent why we couldn't put another one. And then there's a sign as well where, you know, on the beach as to where you can windsurf and where you have to put your gear and everything and where you can swim. So I'm, we're just asking whether we can do this and if we can, including a very environmentally friendly and 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 community orientated way. And that's that's it. And I, you know, I wanted to do it through the channels. And and I'm 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 representing other people because I, it wasn't my original idea, but I just I just took it on because I write lots of proposals and and I can and I I don't mind championing things like this. So that's it.
Yeah, look, thank you, Anna Louise. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for checking in with the city instead of just doing it and asking for permission later. So I appreciate that. And speaking as friends of Shannon, of which I am one as well, I I certainly think it's a fine idea. And I think having some more benches down there, as you say, Anna Louise, that are not the plastic chairs that are going to float away when spring flood comes or get blown away or, you know, so I think it's fine. The only thing, the location you showed, I think, is a good location. I would just suggest if the capital agrees to this, that we, somebody from the city, and maybe it's me because I'm a regular user down there, just make sure we're good with the location. And as I said, you know, Louise, where you're, where Shannon always sat, I think is good. It's out of the way. It's not going to get in the way of people's kites or windsurf or winged foil gear, et cetera. And it'll be a nice bench for people that walk down there or families that come down to swim or what have you, walking their dog. So anyway, I'm I'm thumbs up for councillors. Ron, go ahead.
My only concern, actually, I'm for the whole project for sure, but this specific bench has a weight limit of 250 pounds. And two of me sitting on that bench would would credit it. Do we, do we maybe need a bench that is a little sturdier?
Anna Louise, Anna Louise, you want to respond to that?
Oh, I, you know, we we can look into whatever I could, I I I'm sure. You know, Trex benches are very sturdy. So, you know, I'm I'm surprised that I doubt that will break. But yes, we will, we will, I'll be happy to look into that.
Okay. And then another question, this is Andrea, is how how will it be fixed to the ground? Is it going to be set in cement?
Set in cement, yeah. And so if you look at what the document I sent, we have lots of volunteers. Andrea, thank you, because we, you and I talked earlier. But lots of volunteers who are willing to come down and that that have cement mixes and will help put in posts or who know how to put in good cement, concrete. We we want it fixed in, just like this sign. There's a sign there. I don't know who, did Mojer do the sign?
Yes, Mojer, we did that. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It may be a little bit more robust in terms of building it. But I, you know, I've reached out to a few people who, you know, do a lot of work around Rock Creek volunteering. And they're all happy to help install something like this. So so we, yeah. We'd okay with, yeah, we would totally okay with you. I'm I'm not going to go rogue on this. I would really want, you know, I mean, I'll follow what the city would like. But I also think it should be something that we all want. You know, it's not only for Shannon, but it's for 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 the, as you said, for the people that come down and just sit there with their kids and and swim, you know? And so that's, I'm interested, it's interesting. It's only 250 pounds weight. I doubt that. But yeah, I'll I'll look into that a little bit.
Anna Louise, I need to state the obvious. I I think it should be bolted to concrete anchors. So it could be removed if necessary, but, you know, when when flood operates and the core is down and the bottom of the pool in the Columbia, that'll be well underwater. So it's got to be bolted down, if not to mention somebody stealing it. So so Andrea, I'd volunteer to be your rep if you like.
Okay.
Since I'm I'm down there all the time and I was involved in the sign we put there. Anna Louise, if that's okay, just make sure the city.
Oh, that would be brilliant. Yeah, that would be brilliant. Yeah. Why don't you and I coordinate that and then, and yeah, that would be awesome. And yeah.
Is there any need to talk to state parks or anybody? Or even place something?
That's that's city property there. If we go and click on the map, that's city property. There is parks property around that, but that beach is city, I'm pretty sure. We can we can double check that. Okay, well, thumbs up. We're all thumbs up here, Charlie and?
Yeah, I I was just thinking, and I equally, I didn't I didn't know Shannon that well, but the times I went, he was always the guy stoking the vibe down there. So I think it's great that that's in honor of him and and those that advocate for bringing joy to that area. So in in regards to the location, I would I would just think, you know, the the Rock Creek area is already pretty sparse as it is. And possibly, you know, looking, looking ahead, if it if it didn't make sense with a a more detailed site visit to look at, possibly clearing out some of that, the brush around there to kind of accommodate more of a removed flat sitting area and obviously have the have the bench be a focal point, but just kind of clear. You know, I'm happy to go down there and help volunteer some time to to clear and prep a larger, slightly larger area that kind of gives people space out of the way of where wind when people are setting up, et cetera. That that could be something worth looking at.
Yeah, actually, Charlie, that's a good idea because there's sort of a whole rock face, sort of a rock rubble face along the trail. And if we could, we could just, that would be a brilliant idea. You know, move into that rock rubble face and the the brush. Yeah, that's 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 a brilliant idea.
Yeah, so if you want to, if you want to notify any people, you know, especially on a non-windy day, to to go down and help labor out, prep prep some areas and get some ideas to to make that area a little bit more accommodating for folks to be able to sit and enjoy and watch or whatever.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm super psyched. I'm really, thank you, thank you so much for your support on this. Okay. I've got a very, I have to move. I've got a tiny.
Anna Louise?
Locking at the door, sorry.
Okay, Anna Louise, we're, we gave you the thumbs up and we'll we'll work back with you on the specifics of the location and as we just discussed. Great, thank you.
And also just being clear, you know, we will fund everything. So it's going to be the community that will buy the bench and provide the volunteer support. And then you guys will help me, you know, figure out sites, which I think is very important.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming to the city. Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Good luck with it. And thank you so much, everybody, for the work you do for the city.
Thank you, Anna Louise. See ya.
I'm going to leave. Okay.
We're to city updates. Let me start. Commissioner Hagy called me before the meeting and he apologized. He could not make it because he had a meeting down South County. The one thing he notified business-wise, the county commission adopted the natural hazards mitigation plan. So remember, for somebody that's been here for a while, that's a multi-jurisdiction plan of which Mojer will have an agenda for this specific relative to Mojer. And that's that's a task on Andrea's plate to see that piece through. So that's the one thing. The second thing he did say is he encourages us, you know, kind of the obvious thing, to all be mindful of the fire situation. It's early this year and, you know, the fire that just happened in Rowena, et cetera, et cetera. And I told him that we were going to pass a fireworks ban, so he was happy with that. So that's the update I have. Ron, you wanted to mention the sign, the blinking sign at the bottom of Ponderosa.
You familiar with that?
Yes.
It's been like years now that it's been out. So it's like, it's not, throw everything out. I just wanted to make sure it stays on the list. Just for reference, the other day I was pulling out there and I I stopped and I looked both ways really carefully, but something was barreled down the hill and and I had to slam on the brakes and let them go by. And it really is helpful to have that that working. So.
And wasn't there a contact?
Well.
Or electrician or someone who had worked on it?
Yeah, so, go ahead.
I think Cober was the one that installed it, but then I thought we were going to try to find somebody else because they they couldn't seem to fix it permanently.
I think Tito Landraps, who helped us with the backup generation in the water system. I think he's got an idea of this elegant fix. And the other source is Glenn Fromm up in our neighborhood. He he's a traffic tech wizard guy. He had some ideas, so. But it might be worth asking Tito and say, hey, can you take a look at it to give us a, you know, a little taste? Ron's right, there there's going to be an accident there at some point. So just another thing. Yeah, yeah, Nick County's been in the loop on that. Okay, thank you, Ron, there. Just another thing to your, Andrea. Go ahead, Ron.
Kind of a relief thing. At the bottom of Husky, there's a round mirror. And there's some branches growing out in front of it.
Yeah, like it's had someone else call me about that today, so.
Well, did Rusty get it already? Myrna and I drove down today because Myrna said, hey, the branch is gone.
Okay, Rusty, Rusty get it?
He's been around the city a lot today.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rusty.
But I'll go to that because the link is passing on the same concern from someone else.
Just just while we're mentioning Rusty, I can't tell you how many times I get positive comments from citizens about all the work Rusty's doing. I don't know how we can recognize Rusty in some manner, but it's just hard. People, people see it and notice it and see how hard he works, so for what it's worth, you know?
Well, he has attitude.
Getting the top lots of blood out.
Yes.
You know, he has just has such a positive attitude.
Yes.
He enjoys doing what he's doing.
I asked him, in the fire side, one of the things we need to add is to Rock Creek with our mobile pumping station. So last year's fire at Mojer Creek, or the the microwave fire, we couldn't get in there because the boiler was frozen. It had rusted corroded and we couldn't get it out. So I asked Rusty to, hey, can you change out so we put a lock and removable boiler? It was done the next day. It was amazing. Okay, Gary, please?
No, no, no. Actually, that was brought, that was brought up, but shortly after he started, he was he was given a pretty significant increase in his hourly wage. And we've talked about that, there will be a cost of living increase next year.
Good. Gary, you want to mention the post office?
Yeah, just to, I walk my dog down here first thing every morning. And three out of five mornings, I'm asked to know what the status is on that mailbox installation.
Of course. I've been in contact with the the new postmaster at the Dallas. He's fair of the news. So whomever was there before, it just never got through. So I've sent him, I've spoken with him a couple of times. I sent him a bit of information he needed to figure out how to move forward. He did tell me that it will be a postal route adjustment. So I had to provide all the addresses that it would hit and who would they they would serve. And then also verify that there's a package receptacle. And I provided what the type of mailbox, the our commuting partner was going to provide. And so I just sent him that last week. I have a calendar follow-up at least weekly to contact him to get this moving forward. Because my understanding, it's been that a long-standing issue.
And and that was a lot further than than anyone else had gone to get to the point where we're. And, and that was a lot further than, than anyone else had gone to get to the point where we're giving out addresses and they're kind of changing the route.
So is it, my understanding is that the lot, the receptacle itself has already been provided and is?
It hasn't been provided just because they were kind of in a limbo situation trying to figure out, one, if what they were thinking would be approved. And so now that we've got some forward movement with it, um, I sent that to him for approval. And they said that, you know, once we get the approval and the green light, they would go ahead and purchase it. And figure out where we need to get, so we can move them on.
If you need help with me, the mayor, go on and set up a meeting with him. Because let me add on to this issue. The fees in the boxes in the post office. So today I went in and get my mail and a friend, a resident of the city, came in same time as me and went over to Victoria and said, hey, Victoria, is your internet, internet working? And she says, yeah. And I said, oh, good. Then I can pay you for my box. So I immediately went up and said, hey, Victoria, this gentleman lives in the city. The policy now is he shouldn't have to pay for the box, right? And so she asked him for his address. He gave her the address and she said, oh, okay, so no fee. But she, she was about to charge him without having asked him what is, was he a city resident? So here's the, I, I, let me, let me finish, please. So I had talked to her several months ago and talked with Andrea. And I thought the agreement was she was going to follow up with the postmaster and get a written policy. So then we in the post office could post this. We, we, we would put it on our city website and, and notify people in town. Look, if you live in the city and you're not on a postal route, you don't have to pay for your box. So don't. You know, sometimes there's a, you know, an interim postmaster that may not know that policy. So, so we need, we need to get back to the Dalles new postmaster. Because Victoria told me that he had agreed to that policy. They just hadn't come around to putting it on paper. But go, go ahead, Andrea. Maybe you have more.
No, it's just that there's two, they're two separate, they're, they are two separate. It's one of them that's trying to get the box up here and the other one is. So, but now that she's made this, made this, you know, good contact and it's getting response, it's a great time to, to bring that up.
Yeah, well, he's, he's been in the loop on this policy issue.
The new one?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, so I'm just saying, Amy, if you're talking to them, add that to your list of policy topics, you know, you know, things to get done.
I didn't even think about, I mean, I haven't, you know, where we were on this whole project. But yeah, I can easily throw that in the next conversation.
Because we called, you know, a while back, she, she had put in mailbox stuffers in many of the mailboxes. Hey, you don't have to pay if you're in the city and you're not on a postal route. So, okay. Anything else here? Charlie or Lydia, any, any update? Comments? No?
I, I have, I have something, just uh, uh, kind of something for us to consider as a city and possibly something larger. I don't know if Laura's still on the line. But it, in discussion about the recent uh Rowena fire being caused by a train and the microwave fire being caused by possibly a transformer due to Pacific Power. The, the, the legal and financial costs that are um kind of liable onto the, the, you know, the, the train and/or Pacific Power and the, the homes lost, the cost of the fire, et cetera. I, I just think us as a city and us as, you know, statewide residents with the increase of wildfires, it almost seems like there, there, we should, we should look at some sort of formal, um, I don't, I don't know how to, how this would be worded or whatever, but it's not just the cost of the fire and the destruction that possibly is being caused outside of just natural global warming changes, et cetera. If it's, if it's happening by trains or electrical outages or, or, or electrical outfits or whatever. Um, but it's also the cost of residents' homeowners insurance going up annually that, or policies being dropped due to some of these fires that are kicking up, not by just, you know, the climate, but by these other entities that are having a play. And I, I don't know how that would look, but something just acknowledging that a percentage of the wildfires that are starting um may not be caused by human or natural causes. And that, you know, the, the rate increase by homeowners insurance or the dropping of homeowners insurance policies um for folks.
Charlie, are you, are you asking a question to Laura? I get your point, but.
Yeah.
What's your question?
I just, just, well, just while these, these wildfires are being started by, by entities, and if they quote unquote were you know, by being a resident in this area and seeing our homeowners insurance increase, I don't, I don't know how that would look, but something moving forward to just acknowledge the fact that these wildfires aren't starting just on their own. And if our, you know, residents' homeowners insurance is continually going up, I, I feel like some of these players that are possibly causing some of the fires, they, they, they should be brought to awareness that they're, they're, they're not only causing destruction, but, you know, making life more difficult for residents.
Yeah. A good question, question to Laura, what authority we have to enter into that. Is that your question?
Yeah, to just kind of create like, almost like a database of what, what's, what's the cause of the fires. And we still haven't heard, you know, declaration on the microwave fire and/or some of these other fires, but getting some sort of declaration publicly so that, um, you know, it's, 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 it's public knowledge of what, what are the main causative factors of these wildfires and, and start to hold some of their feet to the fire collectively as cities in rural Oregon. Um, you know, I guess.
Charlie, let's, let's let Laura answer the question on our authority. There's roles of other government agencies in Oregon, state fire marshal's office, you know, and so on and so forth. That that's their jurisdiction, you know, determining the cause and so on. But Laura, do you have any, any words of wisdom about what we can do as a city?
Sure. Uh, well, towns like Cannon, I would say, I heard a couple of different, or possibilities came to my mind as you were speaking. One is sounds like perhaps, um, can the city charge a fee? Maybe an additional fee with the, of the anticipation of your, um, your operations in the city are adding costs to residents. That line of thought. Um, I don't think, I can't think of a way to do that to passing trains, but uh for something like a franchise, that's something we could look into. Those fees are set by, they're, they're capped by statute. I don't know if the city currently goes up to that cap. Um, so something like that. Now, how to pass that on to residents to help subsidize their increase in homeowners insurance? I'm not sure that would require some additional thought, um, if that's what you're looking for. But we can think that through a little bit. Um.
Yeah, just more of an acknowledgement of it's, you know, if, if, you know, say 50% of the fire wildfires that are destructive are caused by some of these utility companies or um, I, I, just to bring, just to bring awareness to the fact that it's, it's not.
Hey, hey, Charlie?
Not to go into the weeds on it, but just, just a thought.
Charlie, just, just for your information, just part of the training, the fire volunteers go through every year. We just did our RT 130, which is Wildland Fire. Got a briefing. Last year in the U.S., there, nine, 89% of the fires were a human cause. So 11% were natural, which basically means lightning. Rail, rail, rail fire, that's human cause. There is. So anyway, um, just for what it's worth, but, you know, maybe, maybe if this fire is determined by the investigators to be caused by the railroad, maybe as a city, we could write a letter, which, you know, as a related break, separate topic, Andrea's been working with Aaron Hunt and I've been trying to help to get Aaron and U.P. to come give us, if nothing else, if not a public meeting, but at least a uh F.A.Q. document to tell us all about the ins and outs of the sighting that's going to go in, starting, what, in August? July 1st construction. And, you know, the community doesn't really know about that. So anyway, that's, that's another topic. Andrew's been working hard on with U.P. But we, we could bring up the, if, I mean, I, I haven't heard any results of the investigation. There's a couple of potential causes that are being looked at for the Rowena fire. So just for what it's worth.
Aaron emailed today saying that he's, hasn't forgotten that he'll get us that F.A.Q., but that he had been responding to the Rowena fire for the past.
Okay.
Mayor Witt, I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, do you know who will be investigating the cause of the fire? Is it a Union Pacific fired official or is it a third party?
Uh, it's in the fire service. So, you know, it's not Moja Fire because it wasn't in Moja. But they have fire investigators. So the state fire marshals will be in, in the loop on that. I'm not sure who else. Mid-Columbia Fire, certainly because it was in their district. So they, they go, they have a regular process to go through. What's interesting, like Charlie says, you know, I still haven't heard what the conclusion was on the microwave tower fire. You know, they, they do their investigation and it doesn't always come out public. But okay, it was by, you know, this facility or that facility. So we'll see. But, yeah, there, there's, there's a bunch of people involved in that, Lydia. We, we can try and probe that. Maybe we could ask, ask the fire district through their, their channels to learn what, what we can learn from it. Maybe there is something, Charlie, the city can do. Maybe, maybe it's a letter to you. I don't know. Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Side comment, you know, Union Pacific Railroad and Pacific Power could very well be considered human cost.
That's what I said.
Oh, you did, sorry.
Yeah, it's human cost. You know, natural causes are very limiting. You know, maybe it's, it's a explosion of Mount Hood when it erupts. Not to know, but it's light.
Even a piece of glass that causes forest fire in the middle of the forest is still human cost.
Yeah, yeah. If it's a glass bottle, yeah. Okay. We're going to wrap up. Andrea, what do you, you have anything updates for council?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Laura, anything else?
Well, I do. It's very quick, but uh I think important to share since we're here. Uh, so the first, they're just two legislative updates. I'm not sure who on the council has heard about House Bill 3962 that was passed this month by the state legislature. Basically, it changes the transient lodging tax funding.
Flexibility.
Exactly. So, now that you're familiar, you just look out for, we're, we're going to have to amend, uh, recommend an amendment to the city's CLT ordinance because it has the prior statutory limits in it. Um, so look out for that in the next meetings. And the second update is just a reminder and maybe new information for new councillors. Um, there's a required public meetings law training that each of you needs to attend and participate in at least once during your current term. So if you haven't done that yet, if you don't know where to go to do that, there's free webinars that are available very frequently. It's about two and a half hours. You can sign up anytime and I can send you the link. So let me know if you want information on that. Does anybody have questions about that requirement?
And that's only new members?
No, every, every, even if you're in, uh, even if you were previously elected.
It's annual, annual training.
Uh, not annual, but during your term.
Okay, during the term. So, okay. Can you send the link or have, give it to Andrea and get the link to us? If we can do it online, that'd be great.
Yes.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Laura. And thank you for your work on the other items. Thank you. Ms. Amy, anything from you?
Um, I just, I didn't remember the phone away. And so the cashmere thing, it's, we don't really need signers for it. Though the true reason that that account is only, is open is to receiving of grant funds. So literally the funds drop in, we transfer. So I don't know if you guys want to amend, add any signer or two signers to it because there's not really.
Okay. Well, we, if we need them, we've identified who they are. If we don't need them, that's fine.
Okay. I'll find them the letter and we've got it. Just, I just wanted to pass it along.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. If that's all, we adjourn this meeting at 7:50.
7:50.
19:50. Thank you, guys. Was there ever any determination on what cost that?